Good evening and welcome. This is the first of a series of forums that the Civic's Academy is hosting for candidates for the spring elections. The election is on April 1st. Within just a very few days, you will be able to request absentee ballots to vote in the April election. And a couple of weeks before the actual date of the election, there'll be early voting opportunities for you. Our hope is that through a series of candidate forums, we'll be able to give you a sense of who the candidates are, where they stand on the critical issues within the community going forward. And we're hopeful that the evening is going to present the opportunity for you perhaps to do a one-on-one with the candidates afterwards and get to know them on a different level than just this formal question and answer thing. Paul has mentioned to you that we have question cards that are being circulated out there. If you have questions, keep them concise if you would, and I'll try and get as many of them into the series as we possibly can tonight. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. We're fortunate to have five of the six candidates for the Janesville City Council here this evening for this forum. And I'd like to start off with a very simple straightforward question, and I'll begin with you, Michael, if I could. Michael Cass, please introduce yourself and share a little bit about your background.
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Cass. I am a native to Janesville. Grew up on the south side and the west side, currently live on the east side. I am the current Chair of the Community Development Authority for the city. I've been serving on the committee since 2001. Also a member of Janesville Mobilizing for Change, and currently am also an alternate on the advisor committee of appointments. I care about Janesville. I wanted to ensure that Janesville has a strong future for my generation and the next generation to come. And I appreciate it all to be here.
Thank you, Michael. Jack Herndon, again, same question. Please introduce yourself and share a little bit about your background.
My name's Jack Herndon. I grew up in Janesville. My grandkids, my kids go to school here. So community issues are a big part of my everyday conversations with my family. I work for the Marshall Public School District, and I manage multiple budgets. I manage an entire facilities team and maintenance and custodial. I also manage all of the capital projects that come through our district. So I'm one to watch budgets and numbers. And I'm on both safety committees for our district. So safety and security is at the top of my importance list. But I just hope I can make a difference.
Thank you, Jack. Michael Jackson, please introduce yourself and share a little bit about your background.
Michael Jackson, not the other one. You're city councilman. I've been serving now for two terms. I'm looking forward to serving, hopefully, a third term. I'm also on the City Plan Commission. Served on a lot of different boards and committees in my twenty-some, 25 years here in Janesville. People know me, though, as the longtime pastor at New Life Church, the founder of Freedom Fest and the New Life Food Pantry. Thank you for your time and for coming out tonight, and thank you Civic Academy for hosting this event.
Thank you, Michael. Heather Miller, please introduce yourself and share a little bit about your background.
My name is Heather Miller. I am looking to serve my third term. I am up for reelection, as you well know. I'm a mom of six. I'm a former police officer. I do caregiving and advocating for elderly and disabled in my day job. I also am a behind-the-wheel instructor for students learning to drive. So I have a little bit of excitement in my life here and there. I am the Chair for the Alcohol Licensing Commission for the city. I also sit on the Community Development Committee, and I'm not done yet. I'm a south-side residence, and we're not done yet.
Thank you, Heather. Richard Nino, please introduce yourself and share a little bit about your background.
Hi, I'm Richard Nino. I grew up here in Janesville, graduated from Parker High School, left for 20 years and have now been back for about 30. My wife and I own a couple of businesses downtown, and I too am running for reelection for what I will hopefully be my second term. I serve on the Library Board of Trustees and the Community Development Authority. I just want an opportunity to continue to improve the city for everyone.
Thank you, Richard. This next question will start with Jack Herndon. Jack, why are you running for Janesville City Council, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, this is the second time that I've ran. I ran four years ago because I had a lot of questions and I didn't know where to find the answers. And through my job with the school district now, I've been educated a lot in like public service and with taxpayer-funded projects and stuff. So I think that I can make a difference with the projects, capital projects, and communication to the public is a big part of what I would like to do and share with the community, make it easier for them to find information about the projects that are happening.
Thank you. Heather Miller, why are you running for city council? I'm sorry, Michael Jackson, why are you running for city council, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, I love this city. I don't mean to sound cliche, but I think my life has proven that fact. I hope to give back. That is primary in terms of my focus. Next, I believe that the council needs experienced members who understand the many and complex issues that are before the city. We're looking at zoning. We're looking at the Centennial Park GM Jacko site. We're looking at a lot of major issues, and I think the experience that I bring to the table amounts to something. I also have time. I'm retired, and I have the time to serve. While this is a volunteer position, in many respects, it's a full-time position with constituent concerns and the issues before the council, emails, telephone calls, and the various other meetings that are incumbent with the position. So I have time, and I desire to serve.
Thank you. Heather Miller, why are you running for city council, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Oh, I love what the city is doing in terms of growth, in terms of being the best it can be. And I think we have a lot of work to do. I think that there are a lot of south-side, west-side nuances that we need to light a fire under that are coming up over the bend, around the bend, over the hill. Centennial Park is definitely one of my pet projects. I'm a southsider now, so I have a vested interest in the growth and the development of Centennial Park. I think we have a lot of exciting things and a lot of potential, and I want to be a part of it. And I definitely want to make sure that those who don't feel heard are heard.
Thank you. Richard Nino, why are you running for city council, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, somewhat akin to what Michael said, it'd be a shame to waste the experience I've now gathered. It takes some time to learn the ins and outs and to get on top of all the issues before us. Janesville's an exciting place. It's growing. I very much want to be a part of that, and this is just a wonderful time to be a part of the city. I greatly enjoy the time I've spent on the council. I think I've contributed. I have a great deal of interest in the future of the city, and I want to do my best to bring about the greatest outcome for the most possible people.
Thank you. Michael Cass, why are you running for city council?
Michael Cass.
Michael Cass, way down there.
That's right. Thank you.
And for all of you, get that microphone up close and personal. Think of her as your nearest, newest best friend, because we want to make sure everybody in the audience can hear and we record it properly. Michael Cass, why are you running for city council, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Yeah, my biggest reason for running for city council is going to be housing. From 2008 till 2019, there were no multifamily permits pulled for housing despite a growing population and growing jobs. So we really lost out on that opportunity to have more people here. We have people working here but spending their money elsewhere. Housing's the number-one issue, and hope to accomplish more housing. Missing middle housing condos, townhomes, stuff like that. And then also multifamily housing as well, and making sure housing is also within the school district of Janesville in order to ensure that they have good funding for great schools, that we have successful schools as well.
Thank you. Michael Jackson, if you pick up the microphone in front of you. Not that one, the other one. There you go. We want to share in this one, so everybody has to share a little bit.
Thank you.
Michael, what are your top two priorities as a council member in the next two years?
Number one is easy. That's constituent services. Number two would be public safety. Number one, again, people vote for me. They go out of their way to go to a polling spot and mark a ballot for Michael Jackson. That says something to me. It's a trust. It's a commitment to me, and subsequently, I feel a commitment back to them. A large amount of my time is spent in serving the constituents, and well, it should be. They have a concern, they call me. I have the city council number on my business card. I mark it out, and I have my private cell number there instead. I want people to call. If they have a problem, they need to be able to reach out to me. Secondly is public safety. I want to make sure that our police and our fire are well taken care of. They take up 49% of our general fund budget, and well, they should. They're a priority for the city and a priority of mine.
Thank you, Michael. Heather Miller, what are your top two priorities as a council member in the next two years?
In the next two years? Well, I hate this word. I'm going to go on the record because I hate the word transparency, because it means something different to everybody you talk to. And so transparency is my number-one goal. And what that means to me is letting everybody know what's going on behind closed doors, because I don't like closed doors. People seem to not understand city government, and it's because there are too many things going on behind closed doors, and I don't want people to think that we are a part of that, because we act as a liaison. And as a liaison, we are the go-to, the go-between. My second would be housing.
Thank you. Richard Nino, what are your top two priorities as a council member in the next two years?
My first priority is and will be continuing development within the city. It's only through the growth of our city and our industrial base that we're able to keep taxes as low as possible, and we need to be able to continue to do so in order to maintain the tax base as it is without having to increase the per capita expense. Secondly, it's a matter of housing, and that comes in all the different forms, whether it be multifamily or single-family. We need more of it. There is actually not a lot that the council can do by themselves, because we're not in the business of building things. But we want to do everything we possibly can to facilitate and make it easier for developments to be created in the city.
Thank you. Michael Cass, why are you running for the city council, and what do you hope to accomplish? I'm sorry, what are the top two priorities as a council member in the next two years?
Yeah, so I spoke about housing. It's not a secret that that's not an issue in Janesville, in the state, in the rest of the nation. Economic development on the south side, which also includes housing. Housing is part of economic development. But we have the grocery store coming in. What more can we bring down here that can make the south side flourish? What's good for the south side of Janesville is good for the rest of Janesville as well. We have the opportunity with the McFarland Pheasant Farm land to bring in the warehouse for strawberries. Heather would like that, I believe. You know, bringing that in, bringing in good family-supporting jobs is important. And then also just making sure the Woodman's Center is successful with the Blount Casino coming in. We have a couple of years ahead of them in regards to getting things on the books and events planned.
Thank you. Jack, same question.
Well, safety and security is the top of my list. Supporting our first responders, making sure that there's communication out there of things that they need, events that they put on, things like that to support that, because if you have a safe community, your community will grow. Economic development is a big part of that. Keeping our businesses flourishing and making it attractive for business to come here and people to run their businesses, family-owned businesses and such, to support this community. And again, that makes it attractive for people to want to come here and live here and spend their money here.
Thank you, Jack. This next round of questions will begin with Heather Miller. Heather, Janesville is known as the city of warehouses, and there is considered a glaring deficiency in the comprehensive plan as there is no commercial corridor plans that are being supported. How should the city encourage and assist in economic development that does not include downtown and the Woodman's Community Center?
Well, we've got a good start going on by Centennial Park. We will have ownership of this property in the next year. I fully believe we will own that property. And this property is the perfect location to create a commercial corridor. We have in place a TID. We have in place what we need to start economic development, whether it be housing, multi-use, whatever that zoning looks like. We can create just that. There's so much lacking in certain areas of the city, whether it's south or west. We can start and create it. What it lacks, we can create.
Thank you, Heather. Richard Nino, Janesville's known as the city of warehouses, and a glaring deficiency in our comp plan is that there is no commercial corridor plans that exist. How should the city of Janesville encourage, assist in economic development that does not include downtown and the Woodman's Community Center?
Well, much as Heather has said, the biggest advantage that we have looking to the future is Centennial Park and the former GM Jacko property. I mean, that is a huge space which will be opened up for all manner of commercial development. As Heather has said, we will in fact own that property. It'll be well inside a year, in fact, I would say. And that opens up all kinds of possibilities. The fact that there isn't a corridor as such doesn't concern me as much as being able to create development as is possible. We're very fortunate to have the land open that we can use. There is, in all likelihood, going to be a new TID opened shortly, expanding our shovel-ready spaces, and I think all of that will help with our commercial development.
Thank you. Michael Cass, Janesville's known as the city of warehouses, and there is a glaring deficiency in the comprehensive plan. There is no commercial corridor plans. How should the city of Janesville encourage and assist in economic development that does not include downtown and the Woodman's Community Center?
Yeah, I agree with Heather and Richard. Through the use of TIDS and TIPS, we can incentivize developers to come here. As long as we're doing that in the system, in the way that we're doing it now, we're to pay-as-you-go. So as soon as those developers meet the criteria or have benchmarks, they meet those benchmarks, that's when the city will reimburse them for the costs that they've had. The GM Jacko site is a great place to start. We have the railroad spurs there, and then with the south side along Highway 11, the bypass area, that leads right to the interstate. So we need a lot of trucks in and out, a lot of commerce coming in and out of that area as well.
Thank you, Michael. Jack Herndon, Janesville is known as the city of warehouses, and there is a glaring deficiency in the comprehensive plan as there's no commercial corridor plans. How should the city of Janesville encourage and assist in economic development that does not include downtown and the Woodman's Community Center?
That's a really good question, because I don't know a lot about what's going on with that property at this time down by the GM Jacko property, but I do agree that that is a development that could be, they could encourage developers or builders to, they could give them direction to what the city would like to develop. Like they said, it's pretty much an open book, and they can do whatever they wish with that. And I would like to learn more and encourage that development, because the economic development here is very important.
Thank you, Jack. Michael Jackson, the city of Janesville's known as the city of warehouses, and there is a glaring deficiency in the comprehensive plan as there's no commercial corridor plans. How does the city of, how should the city of Janesville encourage and assist in economic development that does not include downtown and the Woodman's Community Center?
Well, I think we're doing that with the zoning rewrite and the subdivision ordinance changes that are forthcoming. I'm on the Plan Commission on the ground floor, making that happen. And as it's already been stated, that's going to, I think, come to fruition sometime this summer. I'm not going to address Centennial Park. I think that's been said. I think we do need to address corridors, such as the Court Avenue Corridor, the Center Avenue Corridor. I would even add to that, the Milton Avenue Corridor. I think we could do an arise-type plan, that which worked for downtown, some private, some public monies would need to come together, some grants, but a plan needs to be set in place to make corridors friendly to development.
Thank you. I want to interject. At this point in time, a question or two that's come from our audience, and try and be as concise as I possibly can and hopefully catch the spirit of the question as it's being asked. This is from the audience, and this question, I guess we'll begin with Richard Nino. What kind of environmental and sustainability goals and initiatives would you like to see the city implement or move forward on?
Well, I guess my first thought would be simply to elevate the whole conversation about the environment and sustainability goals within the community, because it is something that despite the existence of a city committee, that it's a topic that never comes up, never discussed. And without goals and input from the committee to actually structure something, then at best, those are just dreams and hopes. I'd like to see something come out of the committee in the way of a plan for sustainability and the environment. I will say I'm very pleased with our recycling program relative to many cities nearby and the extent and the breadth of it. But right now, I think there needs to be a plan, because it doesn't currently exist.
Thank you, Richard. Michael Cass, what kind of environmental and sustainability goals and initiatives would you like to see the city implement or move forward on?
Yeah, I think a good start would when we have developers or people building, encouraging the use of renewable energy, such as solar, putting that on top of their buildings, if it's, you know, in a feasible area, if it's not a shady area. And then just encouraging like eco-friendly construction practices, ensuring that companies that are existing here are adhered to DNR regulations when it comes to what they're releasing to the water treatment plant. We have a company right on the river on the southwest side, and just ensuring that they are maintaining the appropriate levels that they're releasing, so there's not any kind of chemical issues there.
Okay. Thank you. Jack Herndon, what kind of environmental and sustainability goals and initiatives would you like to see the city implement or move forward on?
I would like to see more in the, I guess, the topic of the recycling, the trash, the community. I see a lot of litter and things like that. And again, renewable energy, solar panels and stuff like that. If there was some incentives made for businesses, a lot of homes are using that now, but if there was some incentive for businesses to utilize that type of energy, I think that that would be a good start.
Thank you, Jack. Michael Jackson, what kind of environmental and sustainability goals and initiatives would you like to see the city implement or move forward on?
I don't have a real good handle on that. I am appreciative of the fact that we have the bike lanes. I know that's a big emphasis that we have now, the recycling. And I think that the solar panels and the solar panel park that's going in, those are all good things, but as far as my trying to lead in that area, I really haven't given that a whole lot of thought, and I don't think I can add much to that discussion, quite honestly.
Thank you, Michael. Heather Miller, what kind of environmental and sustainability goals and initiatives would you like to see the city implement or move forward on?
Well, to be perfectly honest, I'd like to see the city actually engage in more conversations with the committee that exists within the city. We have a community organization that the city supports in theory, but they do not recognize them enough to import their views or their direction when it comes to economic development. And I think first and foremost, why do we have a committee that doesn't do anything? I think we need to engage that committee, because they're there for a reason, and get some good ideas and go from there.
Thank you. This next question again is from our audience, and I'll begin this question with Michael The best form of city government is one led by the needs and direction of the community they serve. How do you plan to encourage and foster community engagement?
You can do that by showing up, by being a part of the committees, being involved, whatever that's with a nonprofit or innovation. Like Heather said, there is a group that, the Rock County Climate Action Group, that they plan park cleanups and plan cleanups along the corridors throughout the city and within the county. For me, showing up, being involved demonstrates that. Educating people about what these committees do and the importance of being on there. When you have a seat at the table, your voice can be heard, and you can influence the direction that you want the city to go. And just continuing to represent everyone, encouraging them to be active is the way of doing that.
Thank you, Michael. Jack Herndon, the best form of city government is one led by the needs and direction of the community they serve. How do you plan to encourage and foster community engagement?
Communication is like... Communication. Communication is like one of the biggest parts of my job, and to communicate what's actually happening, proposed projects. And as Michael Kass says, being involved, showing up, showing that you care, and engaging with people. And if you don't have the answers, find the answers for them and share that information. Because there's a lot of unanswered questions, and the only way that we figure that out is together, and all community, communication and involvement.
Thank you, Jack. Michael Jackson, the best form of city government is one led by the needs and direction of the community they serve. How do you plan to encourage and foster community engagement?
Well, I encourage people to, as has been stated twice, to show up. We have a lot of public hearings, public meetings, and it's frustrating to see how few people actually do show up at these meetings. But I want to make a personal observation, if I may. I currently serve on the city's Plan Commission. I've been involved in job creation as a member of the Janesville Innovation Center, been involved in affordable housing as a member of the Community Development Authority. I've helped put together the comprehensive plan, as well as the strategic plan for the city. I am co-founder of Community Health Center, as well as a Health Net Board of Directors, been involved in two mental health boards. Why am I telling you that? Well, one, I want you to be impressed. But secondly, there's always a need. Please step in. You can say, "Well, there's nothing I can do." Doug Dunn, you can do something. Just ask. Let it be known, you're available. There's always a position for you.
Thank you. Heather Miller, the best form of city government is one led by the needs and directions of the community they serve. How do you plan to encourage and foster community engagement?
Well, it's been stated that you show up, and that's what I've done for four years. I've shown up. You know, we have community engagement forums, and most often, they're not well-attended. And that's because people understand that there's a checkbox system that we often have to have a forum for, and we do a little checkbox, just to make sure that we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's. And I think there needs to be a change and a shift in having those forums. And we have them earlier, and we have them where we actually engage the community. What a concept. We don't share what we've already done and what we intend to move forward on. We actually engage the community. And I've already had those conversations to start over.
Thank you, Heather. Richard Nino, the best form of city government is one led by the needs and directions of the community they serve. How do you plan to encourage and foster community engagement?
Much as Heather had just said, with regard to public forums and community gatherings regarding things going on within the city, I've already had a conversation with the city manager about how ineffective they are, largely because of the lack of attendance, but also because they're too far out from execution, and people don't necessarily appreciate the meaning until it gets closer to the point where something's actually going to be done. And so I've encouraged him to try to come up with a way of having multiple community fora with regard to new things going on within the city, so that we can keep things on the top of people's minds. I have a personal advantage in that I stand behind a counter five days a week at a store, inviting people to stop by and say hi, and I continue to do so.
Thank you, Richard. This next round of questions will begin with Jack Herden. Jack, historically, council members have had a history of not responding to emails or answering community questions. How do you plan to engage in the community and let them know that their opinions are valid, their questions are answered, and their concerns are actually heard?
Well, as Michael Jackson said earlier, he put his personal phone number out there. I'm doing the same thing. I do the same thing through my school district and that community. Whenever I receive an email, a call, a text message, I respond to everything, regardless of the validity of it or how important it is. I respond and I let you know, I hear you, and I'm working on it. In my position, I have a lot of irons in the fire all the time, but just some acknowledgement of listening to people is really huge. And for them to know that you hear them and you're willing to talk to them about their concerns or issues, I think that'll go a long way.
Thank you. Michael Jackson, council members have a history sometimes of not responding to emails or answering community questions. How do you plan, how do you plan to engage with the community to let them know that their opinions are valid, their questions are answered, and their concerns are heard?
I try to respond to every email. Maybe I've failed now and then. Sometimes I respond directly, sometimes I forward it to the appropriate person. If a person calls, I answer the call, or I return the call. There was an issue that came up a while back, a year or so ago, and some people were concerned about a stoplight. I went out and sat at that particular intersection two different times, and watched myself, the traffic flow, and whether or not there was indeed a need. When West Milwaukee was torn up, I walked down West Milwaukee and went and seen a number of different business owners, and asked how they were doing, the same thing on a more limited note out on Center Avenue when it was torn up. I think being out with the people, making, as I said, my number-one concern, being constituent issues, that has to be a priority, and it is with me.
Thank you. Heather Miller, council members have, on occasion, a history of not responding to emails or answering community questions. How do you plan to engage with the community to let them know that their opinions are valid, their questions are answered, and their concerns are heard?
If you don't want to do it, don't run. That is your job. You are a constituent. You are the go-between, between city government and the community. If you don't want to be here, don't run. And I'm not saying that to discourage people. I'm saying that this sometimes takes a lot of time. Sometimes it takes a lot of backbone, because people are mean, and people are opinionated, and it's not just in-the-city part of it. It gets nasty. And if you don't have the stamina, this is not the place for you. I make a difference in people's lives every day, and what I say matters to an awful lot of folks on a daily basis. But I am that go-between. I explain things daily, and it's very important. We never should get away from forums or community engagement.
Thank you. Richard Nino, council members have, on occasion, a history of not responding to emails or answering community questions. How do you plan to engage with the community to let them know that their opinions are valid, their questions are answered, and their concerns are heard?
Well, at present, the first thing I do is I thank everybody with whom I speak for their opinion and their thoughts, and the effort they've made to speak with me. On a more practical matter, just in the last couple of weeks, I spoke with city manager, because I have a concern that when we get emails to the council, it is possible that the writer could receive probably three different answers from seven different council members. And that wouldn't necessarily be beneficial. And he's going to institute a change whereby his secretary is copied on all emails, so that they can be directed accordingly to the operations department involved, and then there's follow-up as well.
Thank you. Michael Kass, council members have, on occasion, had a history of not responding to emails or answering community concerns. How do you plan to engage with the community to let them know that their opinions are valid, their questions are answered, and their concerns are heard?
Yeah, a lot of the candidates said just showing up and responding to emails and calls. For me, I work during the day, and I work for the state, so I don't have the luxury of doing city council stuff on work time. So for me, I'll have to set up a time in the evenings and the weekends to make sure that I'm responding to the constituents, showing up to the community events that are going on, setting up office hours in the community at a coffee shop, either downtown, at Mokomos in the south side, Havana on the northeast side, and just being present. And if they have a question, and, you know, get them the answer, and then follow up with them to make sure that there's nothing else, that they are well-informed of what the answer was, and to have anything that's left or any more questions, that we're making sure that they're satisfied with the response that they got, or fully informed of why they had that response.
Thank you. Another question from the audience, and I will try and paraphrase and make it concise. The distinction between the council as a policymaker and the city manager as an implementer of policy sometimes is cloudy, and some would say is disregarded through some actions. What steps do you take to ensure that the city council and the city manager are both clear on what their respective roles are, and that they are honored?
You asked hard questions, Rich. The city council, as a rule, meets with the city manager for an hour every other week. I've done that through three different city managers, if you count Dave Moore. I find it important to be able to communicate to the city manager the expectations that I have as a city council member, that is hearing from my constituents. There's a chain of command, a flow chart, if you will. And at the top of the chart are the citizens. Underneath that, city council. Underneath that, the city manager, the library director off to the side. I see the city manager as being amenable to the city council. We hire, and essentially, we can fire. And so I am able to speak to power, and to Mr. Lehner's credit, I believe he really does try to hear and listen to me, because he understands I'm speaking on behalf of my constituents.
Thank you, Michael. Heather Miller, same question. The council is the policymaker, the manager is the implementer of those policies. On multiple occasions, there's been areas where those roles have been confused and it's gray. What steps do you take to ensure that the manager and the council are respectful of their individual roles?
I feel like this was a loaded question. There have been many occasions where the city manager and I have agreed to disagree, and respectfully so. If we had an organization where everybody agreed, it would not be a good organization. And so there have been occasions where I believe there has been an overstep, and I have addressed them directly and thoroughly. And going forward, this has certainly, this has certainly come up upon occasion in review time, and there's been discussion with other council members. And again, we don't have to agree. We can agree to disagree. And as long as we keep things respectful and reminding of just being mindful of each position.
Thank you. Richard Nino, same question. The city council is the policymaker, the manager is the implementer of those policies. There have been those occasions where those boundary lines have been gray and disregarded. What steps do you take to ensure that the individual entities respect and adhere to those criteria?
Well, as has been mentioned, we have the opportunity to speak with the city manager every other week, and while he will tell us what's on his docket, we then have free hand to bring up anything that concerns us or interests us, and I'm sure we all do. We have a strategic plan for the city, which lays out the priorities determined by the city council for the city. It's really a blueprint written for the administration by the council to express what we see as the most important things for the city of Janesville. That is something that needs to be borne home regularly. I believe it is. The city manager, I think, has been very responsible and respectful of that plan and the council's actions.
Thank you. Michael Kass, the city council is the policymaker, the manager is the implementer. On multiple occasions, those boundary lines have been clouded and overstepped. What steps will you take to assure that the respective entities, the council and the manager, respect their individual authorities and, as a municipal governing body, perform in accordance?
Like what Heather said, there is a line that has to be drawn and that has to be followed. There's a role and responsibility of the city council. One of that is holding the city council, city manager accountable, and in mind with what their roles and responsibilities are. Making sure that if the line is crossed, that it's communicated, hey, this is what our responsibility is per statute. This is what your authorities are. This is what's crossed, bring it up in review time. The council does have that authority for hiring and firing, and if it continues to happen, that's going to be a case of, hey, is it time to move on from the city council manager, or the city manager? The council has to make that decision, and when it's appropriate to do so.
Thank you. Jack Herden, the city council is the policymaker, the manager is the implementer. On multiple occasions, those roles have become cloudy or gray. What steps will you take to assure that the manager and the council respect their individual authorities as structured as the governance for the city of Janesville?
Again, it goes back to communication for me. Not having experience on council and knowing the protocols in the meetings and steps and things, that's a learning thing that anyone new coming into council would have to learn. But the communication amongst the seven council members, and then with the meeting every other week with the city manager, and keeping those lines clear, and not bowing down because you feel like someone is superior, or someone's going to think negative of you because of your opinion about a certain topic. These topics are, as you said, the council makes the rules and the manager enforces it.
Thank you. This next round of questions will begin with Heather Miller. Heather, do you see your board role for effective governance as an innovator, a manager, an observer, a change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why? Which of those roles do you see as your role?
Ooh, I am definitely a changer. I don't like the status quo. I think it's dull, and it's old, and it's complacent. And complacency is not my middle name. In order to be better, we need to grow. In order to grow, we need to flourish. And in order for businesses to flourish, we need good, active economic development. We need good housing. We need a vibrant community. And whatever that entails, we need to be the best that we can be. And if we have deficient areas of town, we need to make them better. And so moving forward, I think we have a really good handle on where the city needs to go, and it's a matter of putting that plan in place and getting started.
Thank you. Richard Nino, what do you see as your board role for effective governance? Is it that of an innovator, a manager, an observer, a change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why? Give us an example. Give us an example."
I'd love to be able to say that I saw the role as being an innovator, but I will warn anybody interested in running for city council that, in fact, much of what we do is far more mundane than that. That said, the city council has to have a vision. And it has to be forward-thinking, and it has to think beyond the term of anybody's service to the community because much of what we do, some of what we do, I don't want to overstate, will be long-lasting. And it'll have effects that could be detrimental if time isn't taken into consideration. Then there's the more practical and immediate. We need to be good stewards of our resources, our assets, taxes. And that's something we need to do now. And so it's really multifaceted.
Thank you. Michael Cass, "What do you see your board role is for effective governance? Is it as an innovator, a manager, an observer, a change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why?"
I think it's all of them, honestly. I think there are going to be candidates or council members that have stronger traits as a change maker or as a manager. But you need to have a little bit of all of it. For me, starting out, I think it would be an observer. I would be new to council. So getting the framework of how things work and then going into, hopefully, a change maker. One of my goals is just to make good change with everyone, make good change together. And it's important to have that and have that mix with everyone as well.
Thank you, Michael. Jack Hearn, "What do you see your board role for effective governance? Are you an innovator, a manager, an observer, a change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why?"
I think it would, as Michael Cass said, it would be a little bit of everything. But to start out, it would be an observer and learning the process because no one is going to come in and change the world. You support the good things that you see are good. And then you try to stop the bad things that you see as being bad. But I'm more of a manager, managing budgets and, you know, watching the numbers, being thorough with contracts and making sure that we're getting everything that we're paying for through contracts and capital projects for the city.
Thank you. Michael Jackson, "What do you see as your board role for effective governance? Are you an innovator, a manager, an observer, a change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why?"
I'll go along with what Mike Cass said, and that is probably all of the above, depending on the circumstance. I remember being at one of these a few years ago, and a question was asked. I did not have a clue as to how to answer that question. Doug Markline was on the council at that time, and he spoke up, and he gave a brilliant answer. And I, thank you, you know, and the question never came to me. I didn't have to show my ignorance. But there's a point there. The council is made up of seven individuals, and each one of them is gifted in a different way. We have bankers. We've had lawyers. We've had officers of the law. We've had business people, such as we have here at the counter today. And they all bring a level of giftedness. I don't have to be all of them, though I have to at times maybe be an observer or be a manager. But I can allow the others to let their light shine. And they do very well.
Thank you. This final round of questions, I will start with Richard Nino. Richard, why do you stand out amongst your fellow candidates to the voters? In short, why vote for you?
Well, first of all, I think it remains to be seen whether I necessarily stand out. I try to keep my mustache shorter than Paul Williams so that we don't get mistaken. Not that that would be a bad thing, of course. I have lived in Janesville for most of my life. I have invested in the city, and I love Janesville. It's my home in all the different ways in which you can define home. I see great things for the city. The next two years, I think, we'll see change, the likes of which we may not have seen for some time. And I want to be a part of that. I think I bring skills, enthusiasm, and certainly a great desire to help the city grow and improve.
Thank you, Richard. Michael Cass, "Why do you stand out amongst your fellow candidates to the voters? In short, why vote for you?"
I'm going to say this, and I don't mean it in any disrespectful way. I'm the youngest person at this table. All of these people have great knowledge and experience. I'm not diminishing that. I've sat on committees with three of them. I stand out because I'm concerned about the future of Janesville, making sure that my generation and the generations to come have a place that they can live, that they can afford to live, that they have good jobs. Not that they can't do this. I have a perspective, though. As being a younger person, I know what it's like to struggle to afford housing, to struggle to, hey, I have to make rent. What am I giving up my grocery list? There's a lot of younger people that I talk to that want to own a home and can't. I bring that perspective that, hey, what is this going to mean for the years to come for my children, their children? And how is this decision going to impact them so that they can have a Janesville network for them later?
Thank you. Jack Hearn, "Why do you stand out amongst your fellow candidates to the voters? In short, why vote for Jack Hearn?"
Well, as I said earlier, my grandchildren go to school here now. I love this community. I grew up here, went to school here myself. My kids graduated from school here. I would love to see a long-time future for all of them and generations beyond. I do what I say and I say what I do, no matter what the extra effort is that I have to do in order to solve a problem, get an answer, and get that communication out there.
Thank you. Michael Jackson, "Why do you stand out amongst your fellow candidates to the voters? In short, why vote for Michael Jackson?"
First of all, Michael, I'd like to be, I'd like to card you after this meeting is over about being the youngest person on this table. I'm not so sure. But I think I bring experience to the table. And a lot of experience. I've ran a small business. When I ran New Life, we had a staff. We had a nice-sized budget. We had infrastructure issues. But more than experience, I'm looking, as Richard said, at the next two years. The Woodman Center is going to come online this year. In fact, I just toured it again yesterday. It's an amazing complex. It's going to come on this summer. The Boys and Girls Club is about to cross the finish line with their capital campaign, the Children's Museum. I was on the Palmer Park Aquatic Center Design Committee. We have zoning and subdivision issues coming up. I mean, there's some major things coming down the pike within the next year and particularly the next two years. I've been a part of bringing all of this to fruition. I want to see it across the finish line. I think my experience speaks for itself.
Thank you. Heather Miller, "Why do you stand out amongst your fellow candidates to the voters? In short, why vote for Heather Miller?"
Well, I might be a little bit outspoken. I tend to call a spade a spade, and I put it in real terms. I expect a lot from city staff and sometimes to an extreme. I've been taught to give grace where grace is due, and I appreciate Chief Moore for that. I bring a real-life voice to the council. I keep it real. People don't understand what's going on. And public perception is a real thing. Public perception matters because if the people are not happy, the government seems overstepping. And so there has to be some sort of a balance there. And if I can help that balance and make people feel as if they matter, my job here is done.
Thank you, Heather. That concludes our forum for the night. I would be remiss if I did not mention to all that the other candidate in the race who is not here this evening, Josh Erdman, had a previously scheduled engagement out of the country. Unfortunately, we weren't able to accommodate any opportunity for him to participate. I urge the candidates to stick around and visit with the audience if you have some extra time. There's a million and one questions out there, and we've only been able to scratch the surface a little bit tonight. April 1st is coming up sooner than you think. You can very shortly be in a position to request an absentee ballot. Early voting starts a couple of weeks prior to the April 1st election. The most important thing, I think, we challenge you to do going home is make the effort to get to know the candidates, know where they stand on the issues because the most important obligation, I believe, we have as citizens in this great community and in this great country is to be active in the governance and taking advantage of the most important role we have, and that is to vote in the elections coming up. So I challenge you to get informed, get involved, and you can make a difference in your community. Thank you very much.